For the pledge to our nation's flag.
It's on bow and heads, please. Father God, we come before you this day. What a beautiful day it is. This is the day the Lord has made. We will rejoice and be glad in it, although sometimes it brings on difficult situations. So therefore, Father God, we lean and depend on you. Father God, we pray for this board, Father God, and the citizens of this great city of Beaumont, Texas. We ask that everything that we put our hands to the plow to do, that it comes up prosperous, Father God. Blessed, sanctified, and ordained in this day we pray. Amen and amen.
Amen. Please join in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we have the roll call, please? Here.
Present.
Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Pete.
Here.
Councilmember Samuel. And Councilmember Muton.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. We don't have any presentations or recognitions today. So I will move right into public comment. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to speak on the consent agenda or scheduled items one or two, now's the time to do so. If you haven't already done so and would like to speak on one of these items, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room, give it to the officer. We will call out your name. We would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up. If you are here to speak on dangerous structures, item number three, I will open up the microphone after item number two for a public hearing before we vote on number three. So now is not the time to speak on dangerous structures. We will do that later in our meeting. This is one of two or the consent agenda. If you're here to speak on any other item, I will open up the microphone at the end of the meeting for that purpose.
I don't have any more.
Okay, there seems to be no one on one tier of the consent agenda. The city manager has asked that we pull item C from the consent agenda. If no one has a problem with that, we will pull that item. Counsel, is there a motion on the consent agenda? Yes.
May I have a question for...
Can we get a motion first, please, sir? Okay. Would you, would you like to make a motion?
I will.
Okay. Okay, motion and second. Go ahead, please.
Yes, on, as on the consent, item number two, my question was the difference between two-inch surface and four-inch surface. I noticed that we went from four-inch surface to two-inch surface, but yet there was still an increase in the amount. So can you explain to me the difference between the two-inch surface and the four-inch?
I don't know, and I can find the answer.
Yeah, let us, councilmen will, will work on that. That, there were some other issues with this memorandum and that's why we've asked that it, we've actually pulled it so we can provide you a better agenda memorandum. And be glad to do that.
Okay, that was my, that was my question because I saw that the amount went up. However, the use of materials were down. And that was a little strange to me. And I didn't know the difference between, well, I assumed two-inch meant the type of covering would be on the pavement as opposed to four inches. So that's fine. If you get that information, so we'll be able to answer it when you just come back to the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. First item, please.
Mayor and Council, item number one is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a franchise for solid waste collection and transportation services to Nature's Management Services. Nature's Management Services, they manage construction and disposal services for clients locally with an office out on Spinal Top Avenue. The franchise agreement would provide for a term of one year and a franchise fee of seven percent of gross revenues received for service. According to the city charter, franchise ordinances require readings at three separate council meetings. This is, this is the first reading today. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council. You have heard the reading of item number one. Are there, is there a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously. Number two, please.
Item number two is to consider a resolution approving a contract to replace the computer equipment for the backup generators at, at our water treatment plant. The Pine Street Water Treatment Plant maintains three generators as backup power sources. Components of the computer hardware and software to properly operate the generators, they're outdated and require replacement. Mustang Cat of Beaumont is the sole source vendor for the purchase and installation of this equipment. And the project will cost $268,880. Funds are available in the capital program. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council. You have heard the reading of number two. Is there a motion?
Some move to approve.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. All in, I'm sorry, is there any discussion?
I have a question, mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Manager, it says that Mustang Cat is the sole source. Was this done through by board or how's this working?
I don't know.
It's not through by board because it's a sole source.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, how is this justified as a sole source? I mean, there's multiple people that sell Cat equipment parts.
A lot of times you'll have like a system and so it needs to be like the same name brand so, so it talks to other parts within the same system. We do a lot with EMS stretchers the same way. They're, they're pro logic, so everyone's trained on the exact same stretcher. And they're all compatible from one EMS unit to another. I'm assuming this works the same way for water treatment.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
These three generators, they're, they're backup, right?
Yes.
Okay. So was it determined in some sort of a maintenance testing that they are now obsolete or out of date? Do they not work? What, what exactly is going on?
These are large generators that are, that are in the control room there at the water plant. And it says computers and it's a little misleading because when you walk in the room, you've got cabinets of generator equipment that go probably from me to that wall above my head. And these are built-in devices that are embedded within the equipment. They're running Windows XP currently as part of the original installation. So the generator itself is okay. But Windows XP is way, way, way out of date. So it's not supported anymore. So those, those controller devices, basically, they are a computer, need to be replaced. They're going to be replaced with Windows 10. So the generator itself will remain, but the controller equipment that interacts with it will get upgraded.
So is it kind of a computer program that we're replacing or is it a computer?
It's an actual computer and the program. It's, it's, what they did years ago in our old in-car video system for PD was this way. It ran XP as an embedded operating system. And it was running an in-car video system. In this case, it's Windows XP embedded within these devices that control the generator. But it's Windows XP still, so it's way, way out of date. They need to, to change it out.
Okay.
We, we got a lot of years out of it because XP's been out for, what, five, six years now? Something like that.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, from my perspective, and it's completely different than what this is, I realize, but boy, it is a very expensive computer. And I'm just...
It's a lot of them and it's hardwired into the equipment. It's, it's their special generator setup. So yeah, it is expensive, but quite, quite necessary if we have a power failure there.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries also unanimously and we have a public hearing next. If you'd like to take us into that, please, city manager.
Yes, ma'am. Before you open the public hearing, we have an ordinance entitled, an ordinance finding certain structures to be public nuisances and ordering their demolition and removal or repair, providing for severability and providing for a penalty. Chris Boone will come forward and so those citizens that may be here in the overflow room can understand the process and then maybe after he's finished, if you'll move forward with the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
In a moment, we'll ask, ask council to consider these 50 structures for moving forward with demolition as we staff do believe that they are unsafe. However, staff, or city council does at this hearing entertain requests and consider requests for allowing additional time for the repair of these structures. However, if council does allow additional time, it's important for the owners of these properties to be aware of certain conditions. First and foremost, that indeed they do own the properties in question. Second, that there are no back taxes on the properties or at least the owner has entered into a payment plan with the tax office. Third, that if allowed additional time by council, the owners will only have 10 days in which to enter into a work program with the planning and community development department. It's also important to understand that work programs will last no more than 150 days. And that 150 days is broken up into two parts. The first phase is a 90-day phase in which the structure needs to be dried in. So the roof repaired, the walls repaired, windows and doors repaired. And then the final 60 days of that 150 is that the project needs to be completed. So a certificate of completion for the structure, that all the work is done. All that needs to be done within 150 days. And we just like to make this clear to everyone because we, you know, we, we do see it fairly often that folks will invest in a property but not be able to finish it. And we have to move forward with demolishing the property in the end. So we just want to make sure that that's clear. We do have copies of these instructions, both in English and in Spanish, at our office upstairs on the second floor. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now I will open the public hearing on dilapidated structures. So if there's any citizen who hasn't already signed up, please do so now. We would appreciate if you'd keep your comments to three minutes.
I'm the first person. It's Randy Moore, 2060 Moore Street, Beaumont, Texas. The address that he's speaking on is 2055 North.
Do you have a number on that?
It's my understanding, I think the numbers...
Thirty-one.
Is it thirty-one?
Yeah, mayor, there are a couple where the numbers are juxtaposed, but it is thirty-one on the agenda item, but it's thirty-two in your packet.
Okay. Yes, sir, please come forward.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members. Thank y'all for allowing me at the meet. Reason I'm here, I'm on the 2055 North is up for demolition. And I want to repair it. And I'm asking y'all to reconsider it, stop the city from tearing it down where I can repair my house. It's my home. It's where I plan on being at. And I want to do what it takes to fix it.
Yes, sir. Did you hear what Mr. Boone said at the beginning about that the maximum is 150 days? Are you, are you ready to repair it within that?
I'm ready to, I'm ready to start. I'm doing the repairs myself except with the, with the permit. I have to get electric, you know, I got some electricians coming and a plumber that has to be moused the permit pool. So I...
Yes, anybody else questions? Yes, sir.
If I'm not mistaken, this one has already been entered into the work program one time. Is that correct, Mr. Boone?
Yes, sir. So just for clarification, there are two types of work programs. One is an initial or administrative work program that they can sign up for with staff. And that has been, the owner did enter into a work program back in July of 2019. And that work program expired in December of 2019. No permits were ever pulled and no inspections were made. And so that's why, because that initial administrative work permit expired, that's why we're bringing it to council to move forward.
What's the difference between that work program and this other work program?
Well, so the administrative work program again is when we, when the city first tags a structure, there's always the opportunity for the owner to make repairs. And so that's the, what we call the administrative work program. And if, if that expires or if we don't hear from an owner, that's when we bring it to council to this stage. And so at this point, you know, what we, we would consider this, if, if additional time is grounded, granted, that would be a second work program and we would, we refer to that as a council work program.
All right, one more question. Last time we went through this with the, the last round of 50 houses, Mr. Manager, you gave us some type of statistic talking about the success rate or the lack of success rate of people that enter this program and we still end up tearing it down. Can you share that with us?
Yeah, the last time we looked at the numbers, councilman, I think less than three percent of citizens bring their home or structure, commercial structure, doesn't matter, but about three percent bring it up to code when they're successful.
All right, thank you.
Mayor?
Okay, yes.
I have a question from Mr. Moore. You entered into the administrative work program over a year ago and no permits have ever been pulled on the structure, as I understand. Why, why is that and why do you think you can proceed now when you weren't able to do anything in the past year?
Well, I was going through a few things, you know, divorce and, you know, I was just going through a few hardships. And I, in the end, I didn't fully understand it. And now I do. And I know what it takes to, you know, get on and get it down.
And you feel that you are able to do this at this time?
Yes, it's going to be a push, but yes, sir.
Okay.
So, Mr. Moore, just so we're clear and because we don't want you to put money into something and then lose it, and I mean that.
I can't afford to lose it.
So once, if the council so decides to give you the 150 days today, as Mr. Boone said, in 90 days it has to be dried in and 150 days completed. The staff will go through that process with you as they inspect in between. The permits need to be pulled as per city code. And just want to make sure that you're fully aware of that and they will go over this with you when you enter into the work program. And you will need to go, if the council does decide to grant you this 150 days, you will need to go into the, into the second floor and enter into that work program. You can do it today or, but within 10 days.
Do it today.
Okay, just want to make sure you understand, Mr. Moore, okay?
Okay.
Any questions of us?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming.
Henry Ware, 2160 Cashmere, Port Arthur, Texas. The address is 2829 Fifth Street, item number 18.
Yes, sir, you can come forward. Right here, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, would you tell us about what you would like to do?
File for an extension. It's on behalf of my wife. I don't know, can I take this down or...
You can while you're speaking, yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Is that all you have to, did you, is that all you have to say?
Oh, I, I didn't know the procedure.
You don't have to.
Well, I'm filing for extension for her.
Okay.
I don't know if I can show you guys. We went to, when they first gave us the information, it was upstairs about the extension. We went to engineering firms and they said, well, we had to make sure the type, the, the title was clear, no liens. I can show you where I just received that yesterday.
Okay.
And I have the paperwork also that I'm working with Housing by Sun America. It's not like we're trying to get financial things for ourselves. We're just helping veterans.
Okay.
That's what this is for, 100%.
So, Mr. Ware, you do recognize that there are, there's about $900 worth of taxes due on the property?
And, and she learned how to look that up yesterday.
Okay, so you know, you're aware of it.
Mm-hmm, and, and yet we're gonna, we're gonna pay it. And like I said, his name's Mike Adams. I, like I said, I can show you the text messages, emails.
Unless somebody else, I think we're good with that. Anybody, yes.
Mm-hmm, and we're, we're gonna pay everything Mike said as soon as we got that information, which we received yesterday. He can go with it, but he couldn't do it until then. They had to make sure it was clear. He couldn't send, it's architects and he went and saw it, but nothing could be done in writing until it was clear with no liens. Like I said, I got that from the title place yesterday. We've been asking for a while, but because the title place was in Houston, she said it was out of, out of, out of district, something like that. And I, I'm not real familiar with that. I work at Southeast Industrial. I work on plants.
Okay.
My wife was doing it. So she's sick.
So it includes the shed or y'all gonna redo the shed as well?
The shed will be demoed.
Okay.
Because it's extremely terrible condition.
Okay.
It will be demoed. When we went upstairs, they said we cannot demo, we cannot do anything but cut the grass until we got approval. We couldn't get approval until yesterday.
Okay. And 150 days is acceptable?
It's more than enough.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay, so when we finish going through these, Mr. Ware, we will vote. And if the council decides to give you an extension, then you'll need to go ahead and apply for that work program in, on the second floor.
Okay.
Within 10 days, okay?
Oh, oh, okay, so I can leave from here and I go upstairs?
You can, but it has to be after we vote.
Okay.
And, and so we will be voting on this as soon as we finish with anyone else that's here to speak.
Okay, so I'll go to that back room?
You can, if you wish, yes.
Okay, thank you. And, and here it is, right here.
We believe you. Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Talmore, 758 Campus Street, Beaumont, Texas, item number nine.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Brian Talmore. Property on the 758 Campus Street. I'm here about the structure, I guess. Structure has, it's been worked on. It's framed and all garage has been removed. And I'm pretty much, I'm pretty much in the process. I was trying to get loans to go ahead and fix up the whole thing. But I'm in a situation where they don't want to give a loan until I put the piece back together. Because they don't want to give a loan on a already started to be worked on house. So that's the predicament I'm in now with getting the house fixed up and remodeled.
Yes, sir. Are you aware that there's about $13,000 in delinquent taxes?
Yes.
Okay.
I have this, that property has, it was signed over to me from my stepdad and mom in a divorce. And it was vacant and all that stuff. So I've been trying to pay the taxes, get the taxes caught up, fix the house and, because it, I say it was just empty.
Okay, and you heard the 150 days?
Yes, I heard that, yes, and that's...
Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, I guess. Is it like that, that six months, that's it? That's after that, is no matter how much been done?
Come back to us, no, sir.
Okay.
The staff will work with you as they inspect, but, but it does have to be completed by then or yes.
Okay.
Don't the taxes have to be paid within 10 days to enter into the program as well?
Or payment plan.
Or payment plan.
Or payment plan, okay. Okay, yeah, I guess we can do that or...
Any other questions?
Let's say, let's say I get with a builder that's, that's gonna just completely build me a brand-new house, what I just need to get back with you all and let y'all know about the house is gonna be tore down and completely another house is gonna be built?
I'll let Mr. Boone answer that question for you.
Right, so if you decided that it may be more cost-effective to bring this house down and rebuild a new house, then that would be fine. We could issue, you know, assuming we worked, made sure your contractor was bonded and the plans are all approved, of course, you know, we could issue a demolition permit for this home and then allow you to build a new home with a permit.
Okay, all right, because I think that's might gonna end up being my best bet. Because I say, I mean, I've already started working and everything been done to the, a lot of stuff been done to the house, but I don't want to go ahead and commit to these next six months and then not have everything finished. And then that's $10,000, $20,000 that's gone down the drain.
Yeah, we don't want you to either.
All right. Because I, I've, I've been in talks with a Camellia Home home builders just in case of this situation, so...
Okay, so they'll, you'll just need to communicate that to staff if that happens. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, mayor.
Did you have something? Yes, sir.
If, if you enter into this program and at some point something changes, you just sit down with Chris and say, hey, we decided that we're gonna tear it down, build another one. You just, they just need to be informed of where you, where you want to go.
Uh-huh.
And, because you may get into it 60 days and go, hey, I'd knock this thing out in 30 more days. I mean, you never know till you get there.
Okay, okay.
But if you're in the program, you've got some flexibility to step back.
All right.
If you don't get in it, it's going down regardless.
Okay, all right.
Does that help you?
So your advice would be to sign up for it anyway, just in case if I do...
Give yourself a little more time.
Okay.
If in fact you think that that's a possibility.
It's your decision, though.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you're the one makes that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But if you, if you say I'm not gonna do it, it'll be demolished and you won't, there's no choice.
Yeah, then that's, yeah, okay, because it's already a couple thousand into it, yeah. I'll go ahead and sign up for it and if I decide to go ahead and with a complete rebuild, then I, I would communicate with your office, I guess.
With his office, yes, sir.
All right.
Doesn't have to be Chris, just somebody in his office.
Okay, all right. And what office are you in?
Planning and Community Development, we're on the second floor.
Planning, Community Development, second floor.
Yes, sir. And that's who you will also need to sign up for the work program within 10 days. You could do it today if you want to wait till after we vote. Or you'd like to come back within 10 days to sign up for it.
Okay.
To that same office.
All right.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have, and I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing this right, Mayank Vatier with GMR Real Estate, 6315 Madria Lane, Beaumont, Texas, item number 27.
It's 29 on ours, right?
No.
Is it 27?
27, 7360 Lewis.
Okay.
I'm sorry, 7360 Lewis.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you. Hi, yes, sir.
Hello, yeah, we just bought this property from Beaumont Housing last month and we didn't know that it's on a demolition list. But anyway, given the chance, we would like to fix it and take care of it, do the right thing.
Yes, sir, and you did hear that the maximum is...
150 days.
150 days?
Yes.
And you're okay with that?
Yes, yes.
And that you would have to sign up to be in a work program within 10 days, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, council? Yes, sir, so what will happen is when we finish with everyone, the council will vote and if yours is included to give the 150 days, then you can go ahead and sign up for your work program and get started.
Okay.
And we will do that today, as soon as we finish with this item.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Gary Lynn, 8115 St. Carlos Street, Beaumont, Texas, item number 40.
39.
39.
In your packet.
In your packet.
In your packet, though, it's on the forty.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir, how are you?
Yeah, I'm fine, thank you.
Thirty nine, you said?
Thirty nine.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir, you're Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, um, I guess you've heard what's happening here, and is this what you're wanting to do, is get an extension and, uh, enter into a work program? And complete the property within a hundred and fifty days?
Hundred fifty, hundred and fifty days, yes.
Yes, sir, ninety days dry in and then a hundred and fifty days complete.
The reason it's delayed because, uh, I have, you know, I'm in debt with the family and then the pandemic, so nobody wanna work. But I will start it, you know, right away to put, you know, the, um, the garage. I already put, uh, the new roof and reinforced, and then I need to have, uh, to put the garage doors and, you know, the size and everything. And I will do it, yes.
Questions, council? Yes, sir, thank you, we will vote as soon as we finish?
So.
Yes, you can go, uh, back to where you were until we vote. And then, once we vote, when you're, if, when any of yours is included in our vote, then you would go upstairs to the second floor and enter into a work program. You can do that today or within ten days.
Okay, and then, for example, after ten day and then you count a hundred and fifty day for that ten day, or a hundred and fifty day for the ten day?
From the time you sign up, yes, sir.
Oh, oh, do you, do you need to see the proof of?
No, sir.
Debt and family?
No, sir.
Okay.
We're, we're good, is.
But I'm, I'm definitely will finish that, yes.
Within that amount of time?
Definitely.
Okay, yes, sir, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
That was number thirty nine.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, William McHale, twenty six seventy FM ninety two Sealsby, Texas, uh, item number eleven.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'll start by saying that I'm well aware of the rules.
Yes, sir.
With this, uh, situation. For the last year, I've taken care of my hundred and five year old daddy, passed away March twenty fourth. If I had to do it over again, I'd do it exact same way. After that, we had this lockdown COVID thing. I was one of the endangered species, being sixty eight years old and having diabetes. So, anyway, I've already got a, my plumber's permit for this, uh, property. Uh, want to save this property. Um, I wanna address the comment about, uh, only three to five percent of these ever actually come to fruition. There's a good reason for it. The codes are tough, they get tougher all the time. I called eleven electricians and couldn't get one of them to take the job. Too busy, we don't do red houses, not interested. Uh, we only do new construction, only known. Now, I'll find me somebody, but, uh, that's the sort of thing you're up against with this. And it's not that this house is so terrible that it can't be rewired. Cause the ones that did show up, say, said, well, most likely it'll have to be rewired. It's not, you know, this house, if you saw a picture of it from the front and the back and all the sides and everything, it's got one hole about four feet wide on the front right corner. Uh, so, anyway, it's not in bad sh- the roof is good, it's not in bad shape. Um, so that's my situation.
Yes, sir. Okay, so.
I, I really think that, I know some people don't, uh, they don't get on it right away and all that for various reasons or whatever. But I, I think people should be given every opportunity to try to save the property, especially if it's savable.
Yes, sir, that's.
I can see if something was falling down, I could see that would be a nonstarter.
We very much would like for you to be able to do that, yes, sir, thank you very much.
Mayor, I got a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
This thing has been red tagged since, uh, June of two thousand and nineteen.
That's correct.
So, and part of the problem is, I mean, sit there and act like it's not that bad, that, you realize how often we get phone calls from all the neighbors around all these houses?
I know who you're getting a call from.
On most.
Cause there's only me out there in Lamar University.
What's that?
There's only me in Lamar University out there. That's it.
Okay, well, we need to fix these properties up.
I plan on it.
Okay, but we've been messing with this since two thousand and nineteen.
Sir, I would've been working on this, but I wanted to take care of my father, and I have no regrets about it.
And I understand that.
Mr. McCullough, um, would you be able to secure the house so it's not open and accessible?
Well, they couldn't get in there anyway, it's a stack of doors right there, but yes, ma'am, I could.
That'd be great, if you would do that.
There's only one place for them to get in, would be through that hole.
Yeah, well, that's one of the issues, is, is if we can keep them secure, it helps.
Sure.
Helps you too, cause, you know.
I can do that within this next week.
Yes, sir, that'd be.
It's only as far from here to that lady.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm that wide.
Okay. So, um, we'll be voting shortly, as soon as we finish this public hearing. And then you can go ahead and enter into the work program today or within the next ten days.
Okay, can I stay for the vote?
Of course, you can, if you will, go back where you were.
Call for trim?
Yes, sir, and they'll show you, and then, once we vote, we'll call out what, what we vote on, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have here.
Okay, council, um, there's no one else to speak in this public hearing, so I'll close the floor. And, uh, is there someone who would like to make a motion on this item?
I got a question.
Oh, okay.
Can you read off the numbers that came in, talked today?
Well, whoever makes the motion will need to do that, so is someone prepared to do that?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to go move forward, uh, councilman?
That's fine.
One of y'all? Go ahead.
I saw move for approval, uh, the, uh, declaring, uh, items, uh, listed today, uh, dilapidated structures, uh, with the need to be demolished. Except for item number nine, number eleven, number eighteen, number twenty seven, number thirty one, and number thirty nine. And number.
Uh, thirty, forty instead of thirty nine.
Oh, it's forty instead of thirty nine.
Okay, and that was all the ones that spoke today, correct?
Are you certain?
Yes, sir.
No, there's, there's another.
There was one other?
I had thirty two. I had nine, eleven, twenty seven, thirty two, eighteen.
Eighteen.
Thirty.
It should've been thirty one.
It should've been thirty one.
Right.
I may have said thirty two, they should've been thirty one.
Yeah.
Twenty fifty five, no.
Yeah.
So, basically, council member, it's for everyone that spoke today to give a hundred and fifty days?
Six people, right.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the motion, is for everyone that spoke today, that we will be giving them a hundred and fifty days, correct, sir?
That is correct.
Okay, was there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Did you say you had a question, uh?
No.
Okay, all right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously, so those of you who are here, if you spoke today and asked for extra time, the council has just voted to give everyone who asked for the hundred and fifty days, um, that hundred and fifty days has been granted. And if you will, please, as I mentioned earlier, make sure you go in, uh, to the second floor and enter into a work program today or within the next ten days.
Mayor, before we move to the next item, ma'am, I'd like to make a comment regarding this, this item.
Okay.
Uh, we all have compassion, uh, for, uh, individuals who encounter life obstacles in preventing them from doing some of the things that need to be done. But we also have to balance, uh, the impact that it has on our citizens, particularly those citizens who have to live next door or across the street from some of these structures that are in need of, uh, demolishing. Uh, I also, I'm concerned that, uh, the lack of due diligence in doing these things, uh, can create an adverse, uh, impact on the value of properties, uh, surrounding them, and many of these structures in older parts of our city. And many of the, uh, older parts of this city are experiencing a blight, as it is, from high grass, trash being thrown out on the street, then to add to it, the dilapidated structures. So, this is something that I think individual property owners have a big part to do with what happens, uh, with some of these structures. But I also understand that, uh, the compassion of, sometimes of workers allow things to kind of go unchecked. And I say all that because there's a property on Bennett Road. The property owner, next to a dilapidated structure, has been asking and pleading for help for over two years. That structure stands today. We continue to move forward with ordering these structures to be raised or repaired. But then there are some structures, for some reason, don't happen to make this list. And a property owner has to continue to deal with, yes, it's been addressed, yes, we have it on the radar, but yet and still, it doesn't happen. This particular pop- property, I know the property owner has been talking about for over two years because I've been the one that brought it to the attention of city staff about the property on Bennett Road. So, I hope, as we move forward, that we, council, be mindful, uh, the actions that's brought before us. Two, the property owners understand that it's not just us that we're making the decision for. It's the property owners who are suffering from the, uh, reduced value of their property. And thirdly, is the overall community as a whole, whether it be safety or aesthetics. But those are the things that we have to balance as we deal with this. And I don't take it lightly, because I saw a structure today that, as a little boy, I used to go to that house and play. Uh, so there are sentimental values. But if you put them both onto scales, the overall good for our city outrage, outweighs the personal feelings we might have. So, it's not an easy decision.
It's not.
But there are times that we have to do it. Uh, so with that, I just ask that we, uh, I ask the staff, we be aware, I ask that the code enforcement officers also be aware, and the citizens be aware of the dilemma that we sometimes have to face in dealing with these issues.
Thank you, council member. I would now like to open up the microphone for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today, and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room or hand it to the officer, if you're in the conference room. And, uh, we will call out your name. We would appreciate, as I mentioned earlier, if you'll keep your comments to three minutes. The red light, I'm sorry, the green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up.
Uh, Hilda Hiltz, thirty nine fifty five Robinson Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Hilda Hiltz, I live at thirty nine fifty five Robinson Street. Your drainage department used my yard for a run, a roadway. Dump trucks, hole diggers, you name it, it came across my yard. It made a hill, and that's what caused the water to flood toward the house, and my house flooded. It did it, they did it just before Harvey, I explained it to your attorney. They did it just before Harvey, so it flooded in Harvey. I lost everything in that back part of the house. I went to the drainage department between Harvey and Emelda to explain to them what they did to the property. She supposed to send somebody out there, and nobody came. Guess what, it flooded again in Emelda, so I filed for Emelda, and I got a letter saying, you all wasn't gonna fix my house because Harvey was two years ago, but I didn't file for Harvey. I filed for Emelda because yard destruction never, never was corrected, and it's still not corrected, and I can, cannot stay in that house. It's so much water got in there, it settled, and it caused the roof to pull apart to the connection. So, it raining in the roof now, in the roof, it's flooded, and the way it shifted, the inspector told me, if I open that door one time too many, the rest of those bricks are gonna fall down on me. That one side where the water came, those, the bricks are already gone. And on the other side, the bricks been pushed, where the wind about to fall out. It just don't make no sense. Your department did that, they caused the problem, that was a house that had never flooded. And now, to say, no, you're not gonna fix it, that's ridiculous. Why should a, a person be out of their home because of something your department did? I even sent you an email, I never got a, uh, response back from you, ma'am. Now, I done wrote a letter to the governor, I'm gonna keep going till somebody fix my house. Cause it doesn't make sense, cause I done did a upgrade on it. From the living room hallway bathroom, I had paid somebody to come in and put tile. The den, the three bedrooms, I put brand new carpet in it. I mean, not only that, I, everybody else on that street had fences. My house, the only one didn't have a fence, cause it's on the corner. But I was in the process of putting a fence up, cause I done bought six foot, six foot poles, paid somebody to come in and put the poles in, they concreted them in, they ran over all the poles. They didn't care what they was doing out there, and it's ridiculous, and I shouldn't have to suffer for what, what they did.
Yes, ma'am, we have your address, and we will have someone come out and inspect. I'm not sure who you're talking about you filed with, but we will get to the bottom.
With the drainage department, when they came in, was installing those, their new drainage with them big.
I understand, yes, ma'am.
Round thing, that's, that's the department that caused the problem.
Okay, we, we have your address, we'll have someone come out and inspect, okay?
Can they call me and let me know when they coming?
Yes, ma'am, if you would, before you leave, make sure that the city clerk has a phone number for you, and we will do that, and she's right there.
I have it.
Okay?
Is it the two two three thirty eight eighty four? Okay, I'll make sure that they get it.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hiltz.
That's all I have here.
Is there any other citizen who wishes to speak today? Okay, if there's no one, I'll move to council member comments, and since we're out of order, I'll start with you, Councilman Getz.
Uh, thank you, mayor. One issue I'd like to address is the fact that this past week, we had a scheduled planning and zoning meeting that we were not able to convene because we could not get a quorum. And I understand that it's summer and it's in all the pandemic, but there's issues that need to be addressed that I don't think that should be put off necessarily till next month, that come before planning and zoning. And I would like to ask consideration be given to having a special convened planning and zoning, zoning meeting, uh, sooner than next month, uh, maybe as early as next week. And I think it's important that those that agree to serve as commissioners on planning and zoning understand the commitment that they make and, uh, you, you know, I know we have alternates, and my understanding is that none of the alternates were available either. But, uh, I think it's important that we, uh, try to get that committee's business, uh, done sooner than later. Another point I'd like to make concerns the budget, and we, uh, are all looking at a proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty one. What I'm going to request is that. that be listed on the agenda as an item for discussion each week from now till the time that we vote on it. So that if we have questions, we can get answers in a public setting. So if we could just go ahead and routinely list that as an agenda item for discussion. And, and maybe nobody will have any questions. But should we have questions, I think it would be appropriate to have that listed as a, an item on the, on the agenda. The last thing is that the Dallin West Neighborhood Association meets tonight virtually for, by Zoom. And you can go on the Dallin West Facebook page and get the link to that meeting if you want to participate. Finally, I said that was last, but I have one more thing. I have to commend all involved in planning Officer Powell's funeral, which was as moving a tribute as you could possibly, possibly imagine. It was, it was emotional. And it was incredible to see how many citizens in Belmont lined the streets with their signs and banners and remembrances. We have to remember that our police officers do a very incredibly difficult job. And I want to thank them for all they do. In condolences again to Officer Powell's families. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. During the 2020 budget review, several council members mentioned revamping the evaluation process for the direct hires of council. And I would like to discuss this in executive session next week ahead of the official evaluation process. It should be taking place in the next few weeks so that council can be better prepared. I would also like to request a workshop on city cleanup efforts. I understand that we're in the middle of a pandemic and we've moved our attention to more pressing things, but we have got to get control of the way our city looks right now. Last but not least, we received a package from a citizen that's regarding some panhandling that I'm sure everybody is well aware of around town. And I would like to see us schedule another workshop so that we can start discussing that further. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mayor. And just agreeing with Councilman Neil, I, please know that before COVID-19 hit, that there was a, we'll say a partnership between some of the council members and, and at that time Cathedral of the Pines Church to address the homeless situation. COVID-19 hit and it put that on pause. I say that because I just want the citizens to know that we're not ignoring this situation, but action needs to be taken. And I completely agree with Councilman Neil that something needs to be done. Even my church is bringing this back on its radar to try to address this issue. Again, I just wanted to acknowledge this packet that was given to me, or given to all of us council members, and to acknowledge the fact that we do have a problem. We are aware of it. It's complicated, it's convoluted. The homeless camps underneath Interstate 10, we all understand that's state property. And we're limited on what we can or cannot do. So just please know that we're not ignoring this, this issue. And it is showing back up on my radar. And we're, we're hoping to find some workable solutions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember, Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, were you like seconding the workshop request from, for Taylor?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a second on the executive session? Point that he just made about the evaluation? To put that on the executive session?
If so, I'll second it.
Okay. Well, all right. Today, we need to pause and realize that a whole lot of spectacular things happened on August the 18th. A hundred years ago, women got the right to vote when it finally passed the 36th state, which I think was Tennessee. Sometimes when I talk about Babe Zeharias, I say, appreciate just how good Babe was because when she was born, women didn't even have the right to vote when she was born in 1911. So, but today, and also, it's the same day that the first black student that went to University of Mississippi graduated, James Meredith. And of course, he went on to do a lot of great things, including serving in the United States Military and the Air Force. There's a lot of things for which to be thankful. Every day when we, when we wake up, sometimes we take it for granted that we're here. We shouldn't. I think we see that we can lose somebody that we anticipated seeing yesterday or tomorrow, that we saw yesterday, but they're not here tomorrow. So keep that in mind as you go through your life. Tell the people that you care about that you do because it does make a difference. And we want to keep everybody on the prayer list, including our, our friends over at Pastor Felschall's Church. I know they had to actually cancel services because of the COVID situation. And, but I understand that things are moving forward in that direction as far as people coming through it after their quarantine. But just be, be thankful every day you wake up because you should be. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Samuel?
Thank you, Mayor. On Saturday, the spirit of Sheena Powell reminded me to always look beyond the uniform, look beyond the color, you look beyond the surface of an individual, but look into their souls where the spirit lives. It's easy in this day and time when you find so many people attempting to divide we, the people, on so many different levels. But one thing that continued to be resounding at Sheena Powell's funeral is blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called children of God. That's not about the uniform or the color of the uniform. It's the peacemakers. She was a peacemaker. Everything throughout that funeral defined what a true peacemaker is. And her spirit will live forever because she continued to say she loved Beaumont. And she wanted to help make Beaumont the best it could be. So Beaumont has another angel. She's absent from the body, but she's one with the spirit. And her light will continue to shine in Beaumont forever as one who's continually on the watch in the darkness, looking for the light. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Mouton?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I want to give condolences to Officer Sheena Powell. I was unable to attend. I had out-of-town engagement that was already planned. But when I got back in town on Sunday, just the remarks that I heard of how warm and touching the funeral was and the outpour of our community that went out and supported the family and the entire police department. Again, condolences to the family and to the entire police department for the loss. Also, as Councilmember Kate said, the 19th amendment was passed on this date. And imagine, without having women, not being able to vote, not being in public office. I think the last 100 years would have been totally different. And what a wonderful thing when one mother sent, because it, it was only passed by one vote. And I would have to say the mother that sent a message to her son telling him if he didn't vote. So.
Don't want to make our mothers mad.
To that mother who could have possibly been the difference maker in that one vote for the 19th amendment, what a difference that it's, it's made. I want also, this is something that happened a while ago. It's, it's just been so much. And I was looking through my phone and I could not find it. And I was going to search until I found it. But a senior at Beaumont United by the name of Megan Pelican, out of 300 Rotary students at the Rotary Youth Leadership Camp. She was one of 24 students selected to serve as student council at the Y, no, R Y L A conference for 2021. And I would like to congratulate her. And it's something that I've held on to for a while, but I wanted to make sure that I congratulated Megan Pelican. That's all I have, Mayor.
Mayor, may I say one more thing, please?
Sure.
I'm a member of Calvary Baptist Church. And it was extremely difficult for me not to be there. Unfortunately, a medical situation developed. Where we had to make an appointment on a Saturday and they only do that once a month. And so I was really sorry that I could not attend. This is one of those things that had to be addressed. And, but knowing when Nathan Cawthon gets choked up, and he's a big guy, tells you just how close that church family is and the impact that it had on everyone that is a member. And I just want to pass that law.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mayor, I'm sorry, one more thing. I apologize. Just listened to Councilwoman Mouton talking about Beaumont PD. It made me, it reminded me that I did contact Beaumont PD through the city manager regarding the panhandling like on the corner of College and I-10. I know that it's been reported that some people have been aggressive, that if you don't respond to them, they'll throw items at your vehicle. And I would just encourage the citizens to be careful. You need to be careful when engaging these people that are panhandling. You, you don't know who they are. You need to be careful. You don't know the state of their, what state of mind they're in. But also, I would encourage the citizens, if you encounter a confrontation like that, please call Beaumont PD and report that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Do you have anything, City Manager?
I do. The purpose was not to come up here on this first subject, but just so, just a reminder. The city council has adopted rules and has a practice for placing items on the city council agenda. So Councilman Getz brought up one item. Councilman Neil brought up three items, which is, which is fine. Please send me an email. Tell me who your second is. Tell me specifically what you want for either a work session or an agenda item. Be glad to do it. So if y'all do that. The next subject, you cannot have any give and take. I just want to tell you where we were on a certain matter. Council voted to remove the statue of the unnamed Confederate soldier at Weiss Park. And so staff moved forward, did that within, within a week, I think. So the second step is the city of Beaumont has an ordinance that authorizes the sale of surplus property. And it lays out a procedure for doing so. And if you go through it, this is a unique situation. You have to have a value for that property. So in order to move forward with the value, we're going to need to hire someone who can, who can do that, who can complete an appraisal and tell us what that value is in their opinion, based on their expertise. So our purchasing staff found an individual that owns his own company out of Virginia. He would complete what he calls an appraisal. A complete appraisal estimated to be about eight to 12 pages in length. Contained examples of similar historic relevance that have sold a company with photographs. And once authorization is given, he thinks he can complete it within a week. That's what he laid out in his email. And he would do this at a cost not to exceed $2,500. So our plan is to move forward, hire this gentleman to make the appraisal, then come back to you. And then about a month ago, I sent you this, you know, this two-page ordinance. And so depending on what the value is, it states that the sale must be to the highest and best bidder after there's been an opportunity for competitive bidding. And you have to advertise in the newspaper two consecutive weeks and lays out the process. So I just wanted you to know that we're, we are moving forward. We are going to hire this gentleman at that cost and then bring it back to you, give you a copy of that report. And then the council can decide. Number one, you can move forward and try to sell the property, or you can let it sit in this warehouse where we have it stored right now. So again, it's up to the city council. But I wanted you to know, we're moving forward. Hopefully have something back to you in a couple of weeks. So if you have any questions, talk to me one-on-one. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay. That's all? Thank you. City Attorney, do you have anything today?
Okay. First of all, I actually agree with Councilmember Getz regarding P and Z. I've always thought that it was rude to citizens to keep them waiting or to put them off when they expected something to be passed, especially if they need something. And I was disappointed that our meeting that was scheduled for yesterday had to be canceled, not due to council quorum, but due to the commissioner's quorum. And that's why we put alternates in place. So I'd just like to know, and I know Sue Chris is talking, but what we, or maybe the city attorney can answer, what we would have to do? Would we have to repost everything? Or how could we do that if we decided to have a meeting before the next scheduled one? And, and also, the second part of the question might need to come from Chris. Was there any one, any item on that joint hearing that is in a pressing situation? Or, or, or any of them really pushing to get this completed? So twofold, sorry.
Just real quickly, the summary of the meeting for yesterday, there were two subdivision plats that were on the agenda. And then there was one specific use permit for a game room. And so.
Were either, were any of them in pressing as far as timeline?
I think the, the plats are pressing because I believe they relate to a sale. And then I believe that there's also that new state law that was put into effect last session that really compels us to make a decision. So I know we're looking at the opportunity to have a special meeting.
Okay.
One of the issues caused by that law that was passed last year is it, it puts us in a pretty tight timeframe. But there's also state statutes that require 15-day written notice of certain decisions. So if we do have a special meeting, it, it may be, it's, at minimum, it's going to have to be a couple of weeks. But we are looking at that.
Okay. But we are working toward that?
We're looking at, yes, ma'am.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. Also, I agree with the trash situation. I don't know if it is a lot because of our homeless situation or homeless population. But I am noticing, and I, I know that there are other council members but I am noticing, and I, I know that there are other council members that feel the same way as I do about the way that the city looks, and I think a lot of it is to do with things are somewhat in disarray because of, because of the pandemic. But I would just like for us to be conscious of it and come up with some ideas. I know that, I, I think that we still have people picking up trash and sweeper and all that, city manager, so if you'll just keep that in mind and maybe come back with something. And I don't, I don't know what the answer of it is. I, I wish people would pay attention and not throw trash out of their cars, because they do it every day. I see it, and I'm going to ask that we stop doing that, because it costs a lot to, to get, get the, the situation back in order to get the trash picked up. Also, as always, I want to mention the census is still going on. We do have flyers available, and I did reach out to some churches this week and ask if they would be willing to give them out at their services, and ask that if they hadn't already filled out the census, you can call or you can do it online, because I think it's the end of this month, or maybe in three weeks. I'm not sure the exact date. They are going to start going door-to-door, but there's a cost to that, too. So we would ask that everyone, please fill out the census either online or by telephone. It makes a huge difference in our repu, our, our representation along with our financial situation as far as funding. A lot of the funding that we get is based on our population, and if everyone's not counted, we're not going to get our fair share, and we desperately need that, especially right now after going through this pandemic. So I ask, please, please, if you haven't already done the census, please do so. Please don't throw out trash. And last, but certainly not least, I did want to, as many other council members have done, send another condolence out to Officer Sheena Powell and her family. The funeral was unbelievable. The funeral, actually, I believe, in my opinion, or what I took away, was that it absolutely, without a doubt, let you know who this individual, Officer Powell, was and what she stood for. And I don't know that we could say that every time, but this funeral did, I think, speak to her faith, her family's faith, and I think that's why her family is so strong. It is just so commendable, and it's heartfelt that I say this, and also, it's difficult to be a police officer during this day and age, as we know. And if I could say anything about it, and what I heard about her at the funeral, and what I took away from it was that she was a very giving person, as other people have said, and that she absolutely loved Beaumont. And I think, if anything, she was looking down from heaven, smiling because of the outpouring of love and gratitude from the citizens of Beaumont as they lined the, the streets, going from Broussard's to Calvary Church. It was, it was unbelievable, and I think many of our officers were taken back by it, because they told me that they were, and just really appreciative of it. And sometimes if, if we absolutely lost someone special out of the police department, because I think she had a lot of years ahead of her, and I think she would have been an outstanding police officer, but if anything came out of it, it was that outpouring of love that came through our citizens. And I just want to say to the Powell and Yarborough families how much I saw of that when the, when the sisters talked, when Tyler, her husband, talked, et cetera, et cetera. It was very moving, and I thank everyone with the city and with the police department that was involved in planning that funeral and, and giving that gratitude to this officer and her family. That's all I have today. Thank you all for coming. We are no executive session, so we will now adjourn. Thank you.